Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 25th meeting of the Hubbard County Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment. I'll start the meeting off by reading the meeting procedure, and after that, we'll get on with our orders of business. Starting, all persons in attendance at Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meetings are expected to comply with the following meeting procedure. Thank you in advance for helping make this a manageable meeting. Copies of agenda item materials are available for public viewing on the table located at the back of the meeting room. These materials are not to leave the table so that others in attendance may also view them. Please turn phones to vibrator off during the meeting and conduct any sidebar conversations outside of the meeting room. Interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meeting will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Disruptive persons will be removed from the meeting. The chair may terminate. A speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists an improper conduct or remarks. Written material concerning agenda items must be submitted to the Environmental Services Department by 3:30 PM on the Wednesday immediately prior to the meeting date. Written materials will not be accepted after this deadline or at the meeting because the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will not have sufficient time to review them prior to the meeting. Such material must state the agenda item for which it is being submitted and the name and address of the submitting party. Planning Commission business is conducted first, followed by the Board of Adjustment business. The chair will call the meeting to order and explain the meeting procedure. The chair will read each agenda item into the record and ask the applicants to come forward to the presenter's table, state his or her, their names and addresses for the record, and explain his or her, their request. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will then discuss the agenda item with the applicant. The chair will then ask for public comment on the agenda item. To facilitate an orderly, efficient meeting, there is a three-minute speaking time limit per speaker, per agenda item, unless the chair allows a speaker additional time. The chair may terminate. The speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists an improper conduct or remarks. When the chair recognizes a speaker, she or he may approach the audience podium and microphone, state his or her full name and address for the record, and write such on the speaker log, and then share his or her comments. The audience podium microphone must be used by the recognized speaker because the meeting is recorded. A member of the public may not donate his or her speaking time to another speaker. A speaker should state his or her comments and address the issue, not the applicant's. All comments are to be directed toward the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. The chair reserves the right to ask a group with similar comments to appoint a spokesperson. If written comments have been submitted to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, please do not read them aloud during the meeting as they are already a part of the record, and copies thereof have been given to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. After everyone wanting to speak on an agenda item has done so, the chair will close the public comment period on the agenda item. No further public comment will be taken after this point. The chair will give the applicant an opportunity to address issues raised during public comment. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will then continue its discussion on the agenda item, and the chair will entertain a motion on it. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment may make a motion to pass, deny, or table the item. Once a motion is made and seconded, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will develop findings of fact for conditional use permit and variance applications, and then vote on the motion. Once a vote is taken on an agenda item, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will move on to the next agenda item. Meetings commence at 6:00 PM and continue until all agenda items have been heard or until 10:00 PM. No new agenda items shall be considered after 9:45 PM. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment may, at its discretion, continue an item that is on the floor at 10:00 PM. Any remaining agenda items shall be continued to another date, time, preferably the immediately following Tuesday at 6:00 PM, and no further public notice will be provided for such a meeting continuation. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment through the chair may modify these procedures prior to a meeting or an agenda item. Okay, so, our first order of business is Planning Commission, and we are going to do an approval of the minutes. So, does anybody on the board here have any comments or ready to make a motion on those minutes?
This is Mike. I'll make the motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, Mike?
This is Veronica. I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike to approve the minutes from the August 28th meeting, and a second by Veronica. We'll take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark. I vote aye. The motion is passed. So, we'll now move on to, we have no old business, and we're going to move on to new business. So, the first is a conditional use application, two dash CU dash 23, by Nathan and Mitchell Lawagi, part of Government Lot 5, Section 30, Township 140, Range 33, Nevis Township, near Fifth Crow Wing Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel 21.30.0000. Applicant is requesting an after-the-fact conditional use permit per Section 401, Table 1 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to operate a recreational vehicle camping area use. So, I've got the applicants here. If you could give us your name and address, and then tell us briefly what you're looking to do here.
Nathan Lawagi.
Mitch Lawagi.
Address?
Address is one, which one do I do? Innsbruck Drive, sorry, Park Rapids.
Okay.
I can't think of the address.
Mine's 35974 Whaley's Road in Ponceford, Minnesota.
Okay. Okay, and you're here for an after-the-fact conditional use permit? Do you want to give us a little background on how this came about, maybe? We could get started with that.
Well, we purchased the Eagles Landing in the end of April, I believe, and then discovered what was wrong with the place when we decided to try to pull a permit for a few extra campsites, and then realized that everything was, not everything, but a few things were within the thousand feet of what Hubbard County requires. So, we're just here to make it right, so.
Okay. Anybody on my board have questions or concerns? No? Not maybe we will open for public comment on this while we're thinking? And seeing none, oh, we have public comment, okay. Want to come up to the podium there and give us your name, address, sign in also?
I am Katie Freitag at 21997 Daylight Drive. I'm part of the Association Rice Bay, the neighbors, this campground. I'm also here with my husband Scott Freitag and another association member. We are in support of this conditional use permit. This is the same operations that have been happening here for many, many years. I think they just got blindsided when they bought the property, and were unaware of these things. So, they have been wonderful to work with. They want to be able to make it right with you, with the county. So, we wanted to be here to, first, as a neighbor, state our support for the conditional use permit, but also as an association.
Okay. Could you sign in additionally?
I will. I do have one small question. We had a few people, owners, as well as association representatives, that took time off work. One who is one of my neighbors, it's actually a veterinarian in Fargo, and he drove to the property to be there for the viewing on Thursday of last week, and they waited from, like, 12:30 to 3:00, and they never connected with anyone coming for the viewing. So, I promised I would ask about that, so I can report back what happened on the miscommunication there on the viewing, and what happened with the viewing.
Well, we were there, I can tell you that, number one. Number two, I'd ask Eric, what time did we, do we give the applicants roughly a timeframe that we're going to be there as best we can?
Yes, the public notice gives a time, and then says, please, give us a half hour plus or minus of that time estimate for arrival.
Okay.
We were there about 1:30, which is about the estimated time, as I recall.
Yeah. And we did drive the entire campground, all the different lanes, and looked at everything, and at least I did not observe anyone out and about.
I wonder if they were waiting at, were you waiting at the shoreline, perhaps?
We were actually by the house.
You were by the house?
Yeah. And we were there till 3:00.
We, this is Veronica speaking. We drove through the entire property. We got to view the pool area. We were just right there in the, in that area where the pool is and the mini golf, and looking at those cabins and stuff.
We very easily could have missed you coming around to the house, and you guys may have been in there.
Yeah, we didn't see any movement as far as people or vehicles, you know, that were occupied or anything, or parked anywhere during our views.
Yeah, one of them was Dr. Brad Bartholome, who is a veterinarian, and he literally took time off from his practice to be there. So, he wanted me to put that on the record on his behalf, because he's in Fargo right now at work, and just say he did want to connect with you all and be there for the viewing.
Well, our apologies. It just, like I said, we didn't see anybody there as we drove through.
And we're all in one vehicle. So, there's only one van, the county van, going around, so.
Somehow, we missed you.
Yeah.
But that's all. We just wanted to ask about that and put it on the record that the association and the neighbors are in support of this.
That's amazing. We drove and stopped in several places. We were there a good 20 minutes or more.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, big place like that, like I said, we probably just didn't see you, because the house, we don't see the campground from the house, so.
Yep.
And we were strictly in the campground area only viewing that stuff. We didn't go down by the water's edge.
And maybe going up the other way, so.
Okay, any other public comment? And seeing none, I'll close public comment. Any other issues or concerns or questions by my board for the applicants?
This is Ken. Eric, there were some differences, I guess, with regards to the septic system, numbers of fields. The septic system is in compliance for the, okay. And do you have any plans for expanding in the third and fourth tier of the campground where the, where this applies?
Not at this moment, no.
Our goal now, though, is to get the septic for the seven sites that were in the process of getting built.
But that's outside of tier four.
Yes, yeah, that's not covered by this conditional use permit. Do your campers bring boats?
Yes, they do.
Where do they launch them?
Some go to the access on Six Crow Wing, and also below the hill.
Where?
Below the hill.
Below the hill, at the resort down there?
Yes.
Rice Bay.
Okay. Not sure that's legal, but, so that's where they do launch at the resorts? Okay.
Well, most of them do go to the access, but yes.
Okay.
This is Veronica speaking. I just have a couple of questions pertaining to the current operating days. Are you open May through September currently, since you just purchased in April? What did you do this year?
Same thing, May 1st to October 30th, or September 30th.
Okay. And do you have quiet hours established?
Yes, same as 10 o'clock, I believe, or is it?
Actually, it's 11.
Eleven o'clock.
11:00 PM every night?
Correct.
Okay.
This is Mike. One other question I'd have is, right now, there's a sign out by the road. Do you have any plans for additional signing, or are you planning on just keeping what's there? And if you were to replace it, what would you replace it with?
Nothing in the plans right now, but if you make a recommendation that we need to, absolutely, we could remove it and start over.
That was not my intent. I'm just wondering if what you're looking at in the future.
Right.
This is Tim speaking. You say you're open till September 30th, and it was like a ghost town there. There was nobody there.
You get that a lot at campgrounds. A lot of them are weekenders. They're there Friday, Saturday, go home Sunday. Pretty common.
We see nobody.
There is also a few older people that usually do stick around most of the year, but some of them have already gone to Arizona.
Okay. Eric, just for the record, if I recall from the staff report, if you do the analysis, I think it indicated that there would be allowed as many as 31 RV sites on their property in tiers two, three, and four versus the 10 that they're asking for under the conditional use permit, plus the shower, and the rec room, and office, and so on. But, the point I'm trying to make is that what they're asking for is 10 campsites versus what would be allowed by analysis to be as many as 30-some in the thing, so, probably not over-density.
Good to know. Anybody ready to make a motion?
Are we going to, any conditions we want to apply to this? Usually, we apply the one that Eric has in the staff report, I think, number one. Doesn't appear that noise, signage, operation time are a significant issue in this campground because it's so isolated, but the first condition that deals with making sure they understand that any expansion in the shoreland zone would require a reapplication for the permit. So, I would attach item number one from the staff report, and maybe the last question. There are no outstanding ordinance violations other than they just need the CUP, right?
Eric speaking, there are also after-the-fact permits that would be needed for the various decks, platforms, and accessory sheds that you saw out there.
Okay, so that would be a second condition, that any permits violations and/or permits need to be resolved before an operating permit could be issued. So, that'd be the two or five.
Sure.
So, one, five, and six?
No, one and five.
One and five.
Mr. Chair, I would also suggest that we do, since in most cases, we do set seasons, that we set a season of May 1st through October 15th, if the applicants are agreeable to that, and quiet hours are from 11:00 PM till 7:00 AM.
Yeah, this is Veronica speaking. I'm in favor of just going through all of the proposed conditions already, plus the one that Ken has proposed.
Adopting all of them, Veronica?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
We've already been given the information from them by the questions asked, and like...
Number six, the indication is that's really not applicable probably in this case, so I would say if you want to do that, conditions one through five.
Perfect.
Okay, so, I guess it would say make a recommendation that we accept this, that we recommend to the, to the county board that they approve this conditional permit with conditions one through five, where condition two is May 1st till October 15th. That any signage beyond what they have must meet county sign requirements, and then five with regard to any violations or permits that are required. So, the wording that's there.
And quiet hours. Quiet hours after 10.
Oh, yeah, I missed that. Yeah, well, three, as it, you had the hours, don't? Right?
I suggested 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
Yeah, okay.
Is that acceptable?
Yes. I just have one question, though, with some of these campsites, I mean, if you're looking at the map, you're talking five to 10 feet where some of them are in. If we're talking $500 per after-the-fact on each one of them, I mean, that adds up to be a lot of money, if we got to pay 500 per violation. I mean, there's five of them that are right on the border. I'm just wondering if that's a requirement, each campsite is, needs a permit, or...
Yeah, every, every structure, deck, platform, or shed would require a permit, and...
Sure, sure. So, I guess I'm asking if we, I mean, because it's questionable where that watermark is. If you move it 10 feet one way, I mean, that could save us 2,500 bucks pretty easy, where I'm just looking, just wondering if there's any way that we could have a little leniency on that, or... You want to pose that question?
Eric, is that a per structure, or is that, is per structure?
In this case, similar to what we did with the, the application fee for the conditional use, we've, as a county, have decided that we wouldn't charge you the after-the-fact fees, given that you guys didn't do the, do the violations, and you're quick in making application to remedy the situation.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is Veronica speaking. The county is usually very, they're helpful in that situation. Permits would have to be required, but the after-the-fact fee would most likely be waived by the Environmental Services Office, so.
Is that correct, Eric? Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Ken.
This is Mike. I'll second the motion.
Okay.
And accept the findings of facts, I believe.
And that's one through five?
No, that's, goes all the way through 12.
Oh, the findings of facts, I'm sorry. I was talking conditions, okay. Yep, and you're accepting staff findings of facts?
Yes.
Okay, so, go ahead, Ken.
I was just going to say, we've been kind of jumping around a little bit with the conditions, I hope. Eric, do you have adequate information to...
Noah's going to ask if you could help me finish them out.
Number four was utilize current signage or whatever is authorized by Environmental Services, Shoreland Management Ordinance.
Just a second. Use nice signage, or whatever is allowed by signage.
Can we still apply number five, the violations? Yep.
That's good?
Yeah. Say object, then we have to argue.
Everybody agree that list is complete, no?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Ken to recommend this to the county commissioners, and a second by Mike. Conditions are noted on the screen here. It would accompany this recommendation, and we have, we are accepting staff findings of facts, so we'll take a vote on this. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark. I vote aye. Your recommendation's been approved. You'll get a letter from ESO, and you're on to the county commissioners.
Appreciate it.
You're set to go.
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business, we'll move on. That concludes our Planning Commission business for the evening. We'll move on to Board of Adjustment, and the first thing on the docket here would be the approval of the minutes from the August 28th meeting. Anybody have any comments or ready to make a motion on those minutes?
Ken, I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes from the September meeting, August meeting.
Timothy, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Ken to approve those minutes, and a second by Timothy. So, we'll take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark. I vote aye. The minutes have been approved. So, we'll now move on to Board of Adjustment, old business, and we've got a variance application, 23-v-23 by Timothy and Marilyn Capuch, part of Government Lot 4 and Lots 7, 8, and part of Lot 9, Crescent Beach, Section 1, Township 145, Range 32, Farden Township on Wolf Lake, a recreational development lake, parcels 07.39.00400 and 07.01.01900. Applicants are requesting a variance from Section 502.2, 702, and 904.6 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed addition to a non-conforming dwelling located in the shore impact zone. The proposed addition will not comply with the 20-foot road right-of-way setback or the 25% of lot area impervious surface area threshold. Do we have the applicants here? And if you want to come up to the table, tell us your name and address, and then tell us about the application.
It's Tim Sapu. I'm here with my wife Marilyn. Right now, we live in West Fargo, North Dakota, 714, Sixth Avenue West, West Fargo, North Dakota. Our goal is, in the next two and a half, three years, is to be residents of Casley, Minnesota. So, we are applying for a garage permit.
We got a representative here.
Matt Murray, 304 Third Street, Bemidji.
Okay, so, tell us a little bit here about that. Any questions by the board for the applicants?
This is Veronica speaking. Do you plan to install gutters on your garage?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I'm going to address this question to Matt. But, when I was out there with the group here looking at it, it looked like, as far as water runoff, it just, the natural elevation was heading right to the street. No, I did not go on the other side of the home. Is the elevation the same? Do we have runoff going towards the road, out of curiosity there? Do you remember that? I don't, don't know that you, do you have elevation shots on this?
Yeah, yeah, so we do. So, the cabin's kind of sitting in the highest part of the property, and then it drains lakeward and towards the road, but there are gutters on the cabin with the downspouts directed to go towards the road. So, any runoff from the roof is connected through the downspouts to drain towards the road.
Okay. Okay. Yep, go ahead, Mike.
This is Mike. I did look at that, and it was directed, and I would propose that if we are going to approve this, that the condition be the garage also be gutted away from the road, as it looks like is in their plans. My question is, is that slightly over on the impervious surface, have you looked at any areas on that lot that you could reduce any impervious surface?
That's how much you're over, and that's how much is the wood sidewalks, or the wood...
Yeah, whatever you and I discussed, we'll just get rid of all that stuff.
There are some wood walkways around the structures. They were there... They were there, the niece had a handicap, so for wheelchair purposes, for getting around, they built these wood walkways, but they can be removed now, if that was a goal. At least, at least some of them. I, I can't remember, there's, there's portions that Tim wanted to keep, just a small amount, with the rest that could be removed. But I think there is six hundred and thirty-one square feet of wood decking, and we're over by five hundred and fifty-three square feet. So there might be some plenty of leeway there to make that work.
Thank you.
One of the reasons we built it, like you said, is we had, we had a niece that was in a wheelchair, so my brother and I built all that stuff for her, so.
Any other questions here by the board? I think while we're thinking on that, I'll open for public comment. And seeing none, we'll close public comment. Who else have?
Ken, just, I have a couple of comments. I think what, you know, a garage is a reasonable request. I think its size and location are reasonable. But I think as a condition, we should make sure that it get built, it gets built exactly to the plan, to the footprint and location.
Yep.
And I think the other thing is, they're squeezed by the, the road from an impervious surface standpoint, and the setbacks from the road and to the lake squeeze them in such a way that that's the, that's the conflict that, that they have. If you look up and down the road, either direction, the, their garage does not protrude farther, if not less, than the adjoining buildings and stuff. So I think what they're asking for is reasonable. So, just comments for the record.
This is Veronica speaking, I concur with the same conclusion. The two-point-three percent impervious surface is a little minimal to me. I, I can go either way with that. If there were some boardwalk that we wanted to see removed, I mean, I think I would maybe keep that in lines of not necessarily removing the boardwalk. You know, it's, it's already in place, and they did not show any signs of erosion or anything that I noticed, but I'm open either way. I'm okay with leaving it as it is as well, and just going with the proposal.
Anybody else?
You did that.
Did you do that?
Yep.
Then, if you're ready for a motion, Mr. Chair? Yeah. I'll make the motion that we approve with two conditions. One, that the new garage be guttered and directed away from the lake, and that it be built per dimensions shown in the application site plan.
They also have to have the Mississippi Headwater Board approval on this. So that should be added as a condition.
Okay, so with those three conditions. And I'll accept the staff's findings of fact.
This is Timothy, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike to approve, and a second by Timothy. Mike has given us the conditions. There's three conditions, and he's adopted staff findings of fact. So we'll take a vote on this. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye. Your application's been approved.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, the next application is variance application twenty-six dash V dash twenty-three by Stephen Valenti and Harleen Hatterman Valenti, lot five, Pinecrest Beach, section thirty-six, township one forty-one, range thirty-five, Arago Township on Potato Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel zero-two point four-zero point zero-zero-five-zero-zero. Applicants are requesting a variance from section five oh two point two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed lakeside deck on a residence that will not meet the hundred-foot ordinary high-water mark structure setback. So we've got the applicants here. If you could just state your name and address for the record, and then tell us briefly what you want to do.
My name's Stephen A. Valenti. I am from Fargo, North Dakota, live at fifty-one thirty-two Rose Creek Parkway South. And the property in question is one-five-one-nine-eight Gilly Lane, here in Park Rapids. And this is my wife, Harleen.
Harleen Hatterman Valenti, same residence.
Address, okay. So you're looking to expand your deck, if I understand correctly?
Yeah, we'd like to expand the deck. It's a, in our, you know, when we bought the property, we thought it was a small deck, and it definitely is when we get our family on there and stuff. It's just a kind of a, a smaller area for us, and so we'd like to expand it, and unfortunately, or, you know, I guess, you know, we're into the setback a little bit, and so we'd like a little bit of relief from that, if we can. It amounts to, I think, point zero-zero-two acres into the setback, if I do the math. And so it's not a lot, but it is in the setback, and I want to do it right, so that, you know, it's, it's appropriate, so.
Okay. Questions from the board? Anybody have any questions for the applicants? Well, I'll, I'll start. This is Mark, I'm just gonna ask you some of the talk that I heard, and wondered if you'd considered, one of the obvious, to me, things on this application is that you could, I'm not sure what direction that is, go to the side of your house instead of out, and you wouldn't need a variance, and you could build by permit. Have you considered that at all?
Yeah, we heard the comments, and we talked about it a little bit, but aesthetically, it's not gonna go with the house. I just don't think it would be a, a good, appropriate addition for the house, the look, the appeal, all of that. I don't think it would, I don't think it's what we want.
Okay. Ken, you have a question?
Yeah, the, the, your drawing would indicate that you could extend the current deck out to the sixteen feet that you want. I think that's what I recalled, sixteen, or eighteen feet, and still be in the hundred-foot setback. Is that, it didn't seem to me that that's the way the flags were at the, when we were out there. But as your other drawing was, the major conflict to meet the setbacks is the part that you want to extend to the left as you face the lake. I don't remember, I don't remember what direction that is, as is shown here. And so back to, to Mark's point, why couldn't you take the current, what, sixteen-foot width, extend it out as far as you want, and then build around to the right, and get what, get what you want? I mean, I don't, it's an awful large deck.
Yeah.
I don't know why you, you need that, you know? Anything over about ten feet, you can get on, any, you can get a table, and you can get around it, and wheelchairs around it if you have to, and so on, so.
Now, we've just had everybody up there, and it's, it's, it's small. And, I don't.
Well, you could extend it to the right without violating the setback requirements.
To the right.
As you face the lake.
But the whole idea of sitting on the lake, or on the deck, is to look at the lake, and if you go around to the other side, then, I mean, you're not gonna, people aren't gonna be able to really see the lake. You're gonna be mainly looking at the trees of the neighbors.
Yeah, that's a want. We need to look at what the ordinance says, and you could, you could expand your current sixteen-foot wide deck out to the eighteen, and give you a lot of space, and still see the lake, as you want, observe the lake, without doing the extension to the left as you face the lake. Well, you're asking for quite a large extension, and if there's an alternative to what you're asking for, it's not our normal practice to approve a variance when there is an alternative that just is reasonable. That's the problem if we face. Okay, you do not have any, any, you know, topographical or other kinds of constraints that are, are inhibiting you to have what you want. I've said that very well, but.
Yeah.
You did.
Yeah, this is Veronica speaking, just to help clarify that. So there's five questions that we have to answer affirmatively, and the first three questions, we can't do that as a board to answer affirmatively, because there are permissible options. So that's like number three, that is the variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current prior owners. Well, it's not unique, because you can actually expand your deck, not only lakeward, because you can go ten feet over to include in front of your walkout basement there on that whole patio. That whole patio is still inside the, where you want to build. That's still, you know, it's still inside the setback, so there's that area. Plus, around the cabin, there's area to also expand. So you have some permissible options that you can still expand, just not all the way into the ordinary high-water mark setback. So that's one of the ones that we can't answer affirmatively. So we're just having difficulties as a board together to find a way to answer that one affirmatively for you. You know, there's, there is some elbow room for you to, and we're just giving you some options also that you can see. I know you want to have more room, and there are, there's room there to build by permit. So that's the hard part for us, so.
Okay, we'll take a break here, open for public comment. And seeing none, we'll close public comment. Anybody else with any other comments, or anybody ready to make a motion on this?
This is Timothy. I was the one that made the comment that it could be built off the side, you can build out right to the setback, so you have a permissible option, so I'll make the motion to deny this application and accept the staff's findings of facts.
This is Veronica, I second the motion.
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Okay, we're in the midst of a vote here, so Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye. Your application's been denied. Okay, the next application that was on the docket was application twenty-seven dash V dash twenty-three by Mary and Howard Shannard. The applicants have withdrawn their application, so we're moving on to new business. So we'll be looking at variance application thirty-one dash V dash twenty-three by Schneeman Cabin LLC, part of government lot five, section fourteen, township one forty-one, range thirty-four, Lake Emma Township on Lower Bottle Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel one-six point one-four point zero-one-six-zero-zero. Applicant is requesting a variance from section seven oh one of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for proposed new structures to be placed on a property on which a non-conforming use exists. So we've got the applicants out there. If you could give us your name and address, and then tell us about what you're looking to do.
Hi, it's, I'm Mary Walvogel. Does Jim have to give us?
We'll take both.
Yeah, so Jim and.
James Walvogel.
Yeah. And our summer residence is at two zero two zero one, Hermit Lane in Park Rapids, and our home mailing address is twenty-five forty Arbor Court in Mendota Heights, Minnesota.
Okay, and you want to tell us about this application?
Yep, we are requesting a variance for a summer cabin, extra four-season cabin, and our property is a non-conforming property. So the cabin itself is all within the setbacks, but since we are a non-conforming property, anything that we do to our property needs to have a variance, and so that is what we are requesting tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments by the board about this application?
Yeah, I want, I want to set the ground rules here. Eric, your staff report indicates that eight is the allowable number of structures on this LLC property. It's different from, people were thinking nine, but your current analysis says it's eight. Is that correct?
Yes, that's based on looking more closely, using GIS at the number of lots that could potentially be created, to give the board some reference as to if this was more of a typical subdivided in the standard lake lots, how many structures you would see. And so you'd be looking at eight primary structures, and then the lots, assuming they meet single-family lot size minimum standards, but then also potentially be allowed a seven-hundred-square-foot guest cottage on each. So you'd be looking at eight primary dwellings, and then potentially up to eight guest cottages to max build out to compare against.
So I want to make sure we're playing to the ground rule. The second question I have is, of the original cabins, back to the two thousand and ten, when this thing was all redone, as I recall, there were existing cabins, but the, the updated situation identified how each one of those cabins could expand. There's a clear set of ground rules on it.
Yep.
With the idea also that there was possible room for building one in the undeveloped area, which we did approve here a few years ago.
Right.
Okay. Which of the original cabins were, is yours now? The right-upset of three hundred and fifty square-foot cabin, which one do you squeeze into now?
The most charming one.
Huh?
The most charming one. We are in cabin seven, which is, there's a kind of, well, a forty-five-year-old log cabin that is on the western edge, kind of the northwestern edge, and the immediate cabin to the east of that would be cabin seven, where we are.
Okay, there's cabin seven, it's next to what you call the big house.
The big house, yeah.
What did I add? That's it, okay.
Anybody else? Comments or questions?
This is Mike. It looks to be in order, and when you consider that there's the potential to put eight homes or cabins on it with guest cabins, a total of sixteen structures, it looks like this is in line with that. The only thing I would say as far as what I would be thinking about as a condition, that outstanding violations be corrected before this permit be issued.
Okay, and this is Mark again. We have one that we're aware of, is that right, Eric? That grading violation on that far property down there on the end? Okay.
This is Ken, I hear, I hear what you're saying, Mike. But if I look at the property and thought, all right, if you had to break it up into eight individual residential lots, I don't see you could really do that and meet all the, and then have a main cabin. You wouldn't be able to have it and a guest cabin with the roads and all the stuff that are there. I'm not sure it's doable, follow what I'm saying? And my mindset is, the original plan was that this cabin seven could be enlarged. What's being proposed is a whole new home, and so my question is, if the limit is eight, why don't you just tear that one down? You've decided to not expand that, that small one, you're, you, you're looking to build a bigger one around the corner, so to speak. Why, you know, to meet the requirements of eight, why, why wouldn't, you know, you're building a pretty good-sized home.
Yep.
Why did, you know, to meet the requirements, why don't, you know, you, you quote, tear it down? You're trading that small one, which was allowed to be expanded a little bit, into one big new one. Why isn't that one just gonna be tore down?
Because those little cabins. Because those little cabins, we consider legacy cabins and it was the original resort. So we have gone to great, we've worked really hard trying to keep that little cabin seven put together. We've updated the electrical eventually, you know, we did all kinds of things. It's a great little cabin. So there are six of us family members that are all adults, that we all have children of our own and they have children. So it's, can be a big property, but we have a lot of, we have a lot of family visitors that come up. So that little cabin seven will go back into be a shared cabin with all of the siblings. So we really don't want to lose that because it still has a lot of value.
So it's your guest cabin, basically, then?
That or my brother's, you know, it's someone's. I mean, we all have, there's 42 grandchildren and 20 some great grandchildren. So of the six siblings that are all involved down here, everyone has at least five kids and they're all adults. And we all love being together. And so it's, it's, it's a great spot for us. I will say also, kind of in reference to the number of eight dwellings that Eric came up with, with the GIS, the recent GIS mapping, those would be considered eight cabins, right? Like livable cabins. Right now, we have cabin two, cabin three, cabin six and cabin seven, which are all probably about 300 to 350 square feet. So those four cabins really would be considered a small guest cabin. Anything that's over the 700 square foot or 750 square foot, whatever, is designated as a guest cabin. There's actually only three or four of them currently. So it'd be cabin one, which is about 1,200 square feet. There's cabin four is about 1,200 square feet. And then my mom's cabin is about 1,800 square feet. And then my brother Chris's cabin is 3,400 square feet. So really, there's only four larger year-round cabins up there as of right now. So there's other, the other ones, the other four are just the small seasonal cabins.
Eric, when you do your calculations on what's allowable, do you take cabin size into account? In terms of square footage that it's allowed for, for building structures?
No, when, when I came up with the eight, that's just roughing out how many lots you could create from the property.
Yeah.
And that's where I arrived at eight, which would then, if those translate into lots, each lot would have a primary residence and the potential for a guest cottage as well. So that's the best we can do as far as comparative for the board in evaluating the proposed number of dwellings.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to, excuse me, open up for public comment right now on this application. And it looks like we have some, so if you want to step up to the podium.
My name is Richard Aho. I live just on Lake Emma, just down from these guys, at 20356 Hunter Road, Park Rapids. And my thinking is, if, if one's going to get built, one should be taken down because that is the limit of what you can have there. I don't see this, you can have a big cabin and you can have another little cabin. They have, what, 10 and a half acres, 13 acres max out there? For, you know, for distance-wise, they don't have room in there for a little guest cabin and then another big cabin sitting there. It is getting to be a packed area down there. And the amount of people is unbelievable coming down the road. So, I mean, I'm not the only neighbor. Two of them are sick and couldn't show up. So, and one of them's down in Texas right now because he has work being done on his house. It got hit by hail damage, so he has four contractors in there right now, so he couldn't get up here. So, I mean, that's, that's my comment and that was what each one of the other neighbors were going to say.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any other questions or concerns? Or is anybody ready to make a motion on this application by my board?
This is Veronica speaking. I just wanted to comment that I'm in favor of approving the application. The request for, you know, this is legal non-conforming, multiple, multiple residential dwelling use exists on the property that commenced in the early 1970s when the shoreline ordinance, you know, it pre-existed before the shoreline ordinance, management ordinance, sorry. The new dwelling that is proposed meets all setback requirements. As discussed in the staff report, if it was divided up into the eight lots, there are lots more potential for building and growth. So I think with the applicant seeking the variance application for this non-conforming use is proper because it would still have limitations to just the ninth dwelling. It still is much smaller than what the potential opportunity is there. So I, I'm in favor of the application. I did want to comment, during the lot views, you mentioned that you may not build the garage right away if this was to go forward. There, all of the variance applications, if approved, have a five-year sunset plan. So I just wanted to be sure to remind you that there's five years.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions? Okay, well, in that case, I'm ready to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion to approve this application. And as far as conditions, I guess the one condition that we've noted is the grading violation on the FAR property down there on the point, that that would have to be corrected before any permits were issued on this, on your project. So noting that, I'm going to attempt the findings here. We'll start with the first one. Let me get that out here. Is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls? And I say yes. It is noted in the staff report that if the property were subdivided into lots, the amount of residences allowed would be far greater than what is there and being asked for. So yes, the variance would be in harmony. Question number two, is the, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not, not permitted by an official control? Yes, because the property is not subdivided where a lawful density would be greater, this application is reasonable. And question number three, is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior property owners? I'd say yes, because of the property's configuration and staff's recent reevaluation of the property has been concluded that eight lots instead of nine could be created. The circumstances were not created by the owners. I'd adopt the staff's findings on question four and five. And do I have a second?
This is Veronica, I second the motion.
Okay, so we have a, a motion by myself and a second by Veronica to approve this application. I've noted the condition and listed my findings for questions one through three and adopted staff's for four and five. I'm going to take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote nay.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye. Your application's been approved.
Thank you.
Your letter from Environmental Services stating such.
Good to go.
Thank you.
Okay, the next application is variance application 32-V-23 by Gloria Drescher Trust, part of government lot two and part of government lot five, section two, township 140, range 32, White Oak Township on Steel Lake, a natural environment lake, parcels 28.02.00200 and 28.02.00800. Applicant is requesting a variance from sections 501, 501.11001, 1003 and 1005 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance and section four subdivision A, 1 point C, point two of the subdivision ordinance regarding the required minimum build, buildable area, square footage for repairing lots on a natural environment lake. Got the applicant here, so if you could give us your name and address?
Sure, Don Duscher, 2713 28th Avenue, South Fargo, North Dakota. My wife apologized for not being here. She's on some boards in Fargo nonprofits and was not able to be here. So she's entrusted this to me.
Okay, if you want to just tell us what you're looking to do?
Yeah, briefly, we, we in 2019 bought a property adjacent to this parcel that has about 1,200 foot of frontage on Island Lake. That has a structure on it. We live, we basically live in Fargo and that is our vacation area. As we, as I bought that property, I, I wanted the property to the, directly to the east of it, a small parcel of timberland that was owned by a woman who inherited from her father. They bought that property back in the 70s. And I basically wanted the timberland because it was then abutted up to highway, county highway 12. She was not willing to split it, so I bought the Steel Lakeside also. And at that point, I was thinking about developing that. But then my kids, my adult kids said, well, we'd love to have some of that. So I decided to split that 12 acres, or tried to split that 12 acres and went to the Environmental Services and they said that I had, was not in compliance with the buildable area needed to make that parcel B, as you see on the map, compliant. So we decided to put out the application for a variance. Our goal is to not sell any property there. We're not going to build on the, what would be considered parcel C. My son, adult son, would get parcel A. My adult daughter, who's here with her husband, would get parcel B and build a very small dwelling on there. They basically want to be close to us as we get, as we get older. And they want their own privacy. They want the serenity of Steel Lake. We found that that's a beautiful area down there. And we're basically hampered a bit by the bluff setbacks in the road. The road splits the property. So we have to be satisfying the, the road setbacks also. We have just over 30,000 square foot of buildable, which obviously if it was a recreational lake, would be more than compliant. But the regulations are 40, so we're requesting a variance to, to get that 30,000. And thank you all for coming out on Thursday.
You're welcome. Okay, any questions, the board, on this? Mike?
Mr. Chair, a question. I believe that design has been done or at least identified sites for septic on both of the two parcels. And I'm wondering if those were sized for any particular size cabin or home on those?
The gentleman who came out said there was two sites on parcel B that was acceptable for up to a three-bedroom home. I believe that was in his findings. I think that we sent that along with the application. He did not say parcel A because parcel A is over seven acres. And he said that he didn't have to determine the sizing of that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Let's open for public comment. I was thinking about that. It looks like we've got.
Hi, I'm John Newman. I live at 21426 County 12. And I've lived on Steel Lake since 2014. That is my official residence. And I'm, I'm against this variance and there's a, I was looking at the public comments on your website today and I believe the second letter spelled things out very accurately. It is a very unique lake. I've been in contact with students from Iowa State that have been out to study that lake the last two summers, not this summer, summer of 2022 and 2021. And I spoke on the phone this summer with a gal from Penn State that was writing a grant to study that lake. And I believe the ordinances are in place for a reason and I can't think of a, a better example than this lake to enforce those and not grant these variances. And that's all I have to say about it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Good evening, my name is Violet Struce. My address is 21403 County Road 12 in Akeley, so just south of the property. And I did submit written comments, so I'm the, I'm the wordy letter.
Excuse me, Violet. I'm, I'm just going to ask, because your letter is part of the public record, if you, if you have more to say, that's fine. If you just try not to repeat what you've put in the letter.
I'll do my best.
Okay.
The only thing I wanted to call to your attention, which I neglected to put in the letter, is that the first provision that you're supposed to find in order to grant a variance is that the variance is in harmony with the purpose and the intent of the ordinances. And I didn't call to your attention section 302, which is the natural environment goals and objectives for that management district. And it says to maintain low density or to be very careful about density on the lake. So I just wanted to call that to your attention because it wasn't in my written comments.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Any other questions or comments from the board on this?
Yeah, this is Ken and I, and I appreciate the people speaking to the fact that the Steel Lake is very unique, very special. So I need to step back at that. And when I look at, this is a five-acre piece of property when in fact, one could have something like a third that size on a natural environment lake. Any building area is well-setback, meets all setback requirements. So when I look at a home in this buildable area, I can't see that there is any impact that it would occur to Steel Lake. The buildable area is the only issue. It's 10,000 square feet less than what's required. Regular lake is only about 20,000 square feet. And so you think about, well, how about impervious surface? Is that an issue? Well, you could build a reasonable-sized cabin, guest cabin, garage and a septic system and still not use up all that buildable area with impervious surface. And usually we apply that to a whole, would apply it to the whole five acres. So I don't see personally that building in this area on this five-acre plot has any impact to the quality of Steel Lake. So that's my view on it.
Thank you, Ken. Anybody else?
Yeah, this is Veronica speaking. I agree with Ken. Also, just for some additional supportive information, subdividing the government lot into three tracts and all of them have five acres or more with the two proposed repairing lots, it's, it's a reasonable proposal. The main thing that we have is the bluff along the lake that runs the full width of the property and the 50-foot road right-of-way setbacks is what causes parcel B to fall short of that minimum, minimum buildable area. So I agree that I'm in favor for this. That's, the request is a reasonable request.
It's, the request is a reasonable request.
Okay, thank you, Veronica. Mike? Tim? Any comments? Motion?
I'm in favor.
You're in favor, okay. Anybody ready to make a motion on this?
Yeah, this is Veronica. I make a motion that we approve the application, and I will adopt the staff's findings of facts. We have already established the size for parcel that it's gonna be a two to a three-bedroom house as far as septic goes, and I'm, I'm in favor with that. I don't think that we need to impose any other conditions unless anybody else has any. Then I, then I accept the staff's findings of facts.
This is Mike, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Veronica to approve this application, a second by Mike, and we are going to adopt staff findings of facts. So we'll take a vote on this. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye. Your application's been approved. You'll get a letter from ESO stating as such.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next application is variance application 33-V-23 by Tyler and Heather Schmidt and Brenton and Tina Nuling, part of Lots Two, Three, and Four, First Addition to Moccasin Acres, Section Four, Township 141, Range 35, Arago Township on Island Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcel 02.37.40200. Applicants are requesting a variance from Article Five and Sections 501.2 and 511.4 of the Shoreline Management Ordinance to exceed the allowed dwelling unit density and have more than one RV site on the lot. We have the applicants there, so if you could give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Tina Nuling. I'm here with my husband Brenton. Our mailing address is 14300 Mattson Road, Frazee.
Tyler Schmidt, 49610 East Wymer Lake Road in Frazee.
Okay. And just tell us briefly what you want to do here, what you're asking for.
We bought this property, obviously, together as co-owners, so we have two sets of families that go up there to enjoy the property. Our family is a family of six. Their family is a family of five. When we purchased, we were not aware that there was a limit on the RVs. We found out after the fact, so that's why we're applying for the variance, so that we can all enjoy our property.
Okay. Okay, any questions? Comments by the board on this application?
This is Veronica speaking. During the lot views, you mentioned that in the future you were most likely going to be building a stick structure. Is that correct?
That would be our plan, yes.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll open quickly for public comment here. Let's open it for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Questions? Comments?
To Veronica's point, the idea that if you build a permanent cabin, this variance would no longer apply to have two RVs. I think I'd like to add the fact that you'd have to also void out the waste and water system for a second site, because if it's still there, it's gonna be very conducive to friends coming in, parking their RVs. And I realize that they can only be there 30 days, but there's nobody to watch, so I don't know quite how to state that or what my colleagues think. But to have a fully, all the facilities for a second RV, once you build a house, doesn't seem appropriate, so what are the rest of you think? Is it over-managing, or is it just protecting the neighbors?
This is Mark. Personally speaking, I'm not too concerned about that issue myself. Ken, I don't really have anything else to say about it. It didn't occur to me to consider that. So I can't give you any more comments on justifying that, or... Anybody else?
This is Veronica speaking. So currently, they just have a holding tank, a 1,500-gallon holding tank on the property, correct? Just one?
Yep.
Yeah, so in my eyes, in the future, when they go to build a stick house, they're gonna have to have a whole new septic design in place anyway.
There is a mound. We already addressed that, and they did design a mound, and there is space currently where the holding tank is to fulfill that need if, if that happens.
I'm not really concerned with the holding tank as, either, I mean, because they're gonna have to get a septic permit. I mean...
This is Tim speaking. I think the site will be demolished when the house is put in anyway.
That's...
Just the condition of just going, that they can't have two when they build is good enough.
Right.
Do you think they'll build, build right there? I think they'll build down the hill on the flat. That's still 100 feet back.
I think it'd be a walkout.
Think it'd be a walkout?
Pardon me, I did not hear your comment.
Our, our potential plan right now would be to build up top and then into a hill with a possible walkout.
So, this is Veronica speaking. At this time, we're looking at a possible condition on your application, that if a stick structure is ever built, that we would limit you to either one RV or zero RVs, just because you, one would be a guest cabin, but in future, it would be to zero RVs. You understand that?
And that would be a permanent RV, not temporary sites.
Correct, right, yes. Correct.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody ready to make a motion on this?
This is Veronica. I just wanted to address some supporting statements from the staff report. The lot meets the minimum lot size requirements, and thus it would be allowed to have these, to have a primary residence and a guest cottage on the lot. So the two proposed RV sites are much less habitable at this time than would be allowed if a permanent residence and guest cottage were placed on that lot. So the two RV sites currently will meet the, all the setback requirements. I think the condition, if we place a condition, then that would be definitely in the right direction.
You're making the point that our rationale for approving two RV sites?
Yep.
Is in fact that you could have a stick, and there would be space for guest cabins, so one of these is quote, the prime home, the other is a guest cabin.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
If you're ready, I'll make a motion.
I am ready, Mike.
I'll make the motion that we approve this application with the condition, if a permanent dwelling or cabin is built, this variance is no longer in effect. In fact, it, one of the two RVs would have to be removed, and, and one would be treated as a guest cabin. Or if you built an actual guest cabin, both RVs would then have to leave. And I'll accept the staff findings of fact. And for number four, will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character of the locality? Yes, it will. Currently, the lot's big enough to support a cabin or a permanent home and a guest cabin, and if we treat this as one guest cabin and one regular cabinet, it complies and meets the character. So with that, I would answer yes.
Ken? Okay, this is Mark. I'll second Mike's motion to approve. We've got the motion by Mike to approve and a second by myself. Mike has adopted the staff's findings and added his answer for question number four. He's given his conditions. We'll take a vote on it. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye. Your application's been approved. You'll get a letter from Eric's office stating such.
Sounds good. Thank you, guys. Thank you for your time.
Just as far as next month's agenda, and we had a number of applications submitted. Today was the deadline day. I don't have a count, but it's probably in the neighborhood of 10 to a dozen. And so we've got the conditional use application that was heard last month that was tabled until October to deal with as well, so plan on a full meeting. Hopefully, we can get through it in one evening, but I'd kinda save Tuesday night just in case. And then for lot views, I don't know if we'll, we'll have to see how they map out to see if we can get through them in a day or if we'll need a, a second day, so just a forewarning that it's gonna be plenty for you to do in October.
Okay. We won't take any public comment on that, Eric. Anybody else? Anything else, Eric?
That's all that I have.
Okay. Well, anybody ready, ready to make a motion to adjourn?
So make the motion to adjourn?
Veronica, I second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Mike to adjourn, a second by Veronica. Timothy, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye. Meeting is adjourned.
Good job, Mark.
Yeah, good job.